Welcome to the March 8, 2021 Virtual Borough Council Meeting. Adequate notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Said notice was sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on March 3, 2021, posted in Borough Hall and on file in the Clerk's Office. All requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. And before we go on with the regular business of tonight, I just want to note that, you know, we had another loss due to the coronavirus in town today. It's the 11th resident who has died since almost one year ago when we had our first. And I'd like to lead us all in a moment of silence on behalf of the victims of this terrible pandemic. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Jackson.
Councilman Delia?
Here.
Councilman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilman Candell?
Here.
Councilwoman Rasmussen? Dorothy, you're on mute.
No, I'm mute.
She's here. Councilwoman Rubin?
Here.
Council President Kuzkowski?
Here.
Mayor Bush?
Here. All right, so we're going to open the agenda session. Do I have a motion to open the agenda session?
I move to open the agenda session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are any opposed? Are there any items for the agenda session? Council President, you have anything for the agenda session?
I think we have one thing.
Okay.
Correspondence?
We have correspondence for the agenda session. I think I'm going to just mention it now because it's easier to just talk about it now. We received some correspondence today that is not something that's easy when you have a member of your group, a member of somebody with whom you work, someone with whom, you know, you have a very close relationship when they tell you that they're going to be leaving. But Susan Jackson announced earlier today that she's going to be leaving us to go elsewhere. And I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say tonight, and I don't know who else wants to join me in this, but how much I appreciate Susan, how she helped me get used to this job when I got to it about three and a half years ago, and really helped me adjust to the life of mayor and teach me the way things work. She has been there every step of the way, whether it be helping me learn how to use my phone or helping me marry people, which she has done a great job doing. And we've had a lot of those weddings together, haven't we, Susan?
We've.
Yeah, and I, you know, I know these things are always kind of bittersweet. You know, people need to move on with their lives, and I certainly appreciate that. But, you know, it's going to be really hard not saying, "Roll call, please, Ms. Jackson," again, you know, you're somebody, again, that's sort of the way I know to run a meeting. So I say this, you know, obviously you'll be missed, and I appreciate you and appreciate everything you've offered over these last, I don't know, three and however, three, almost three and a half years with me as mayor. And I don't know if other members of the council want to join in.
I think Jonathan, I would just like to say that people don't realize, you know, they see Susan on TV on the nights of the council meeting, but they don't see all the many working parts behind the scenes that go into making the meeting happen, not to mention the regular, you know, other duties of the borough clerk. So I just want to thank you, Susan, for your service, and I wish you the best as you move forward in your career, and thank you so much for sharing part of it with us.
It's been my pleasure.
Yeah, I'm very sad to see Susan leave. I always used to love to go up to the office, and if I needed something, she'd have it ready for me, but you'd always have like a bowl of candy up there. It would be hard candy, it would be chocolate candy, it would be chewy candy, and I could always go there and have something to do and just have a little snack. So I appreciate everything that you've done for me over the few years that you spent with us. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate every time I ever had to communicate with you, that you were always so friendly and helpful and pleasant, and we could always get ourselves into a deep philosophical conversation regardless of why I stopped in your office. If I went in there to pick up an envelope, somehow we ended up talking for an hour about politics or life or anything. So I will miss those opportunities, and I will wish you the best of luck onward and upward wherever your career may take you, and it will be hard to fill your shoes.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, I always used to, whenever I would come to the borough offices, whether it was to talk to Jay when he was in the BA or talk to Melissa, it was always great to catch up with you, Susan, whenever we were there. I ended up coming early most times so that we can catch up with each other before the meeting started. So, and I'll just echo what Jonathan said too, actually, about how you helped me learn what this is, certainly in the beginning when I had no idea. And now I sort of have an idea, maybe a little bit, but you're still there to help, to help you and help me along the way. So thank you for that. Thank you for your service to the borough and wish you luck and have a lovely night.
So, since I've only been on the job for a little over two months, I'm the only one who doesn't get the benefit of the Susan Jackson, you know.
Yes, you have. Morning.
But I will say, your dedication is amazing. I up early, and I, sometimes things are on my mind, I send a text at 5:45 a.m., and then I apologize immediately after I sent the text that I said that so early, and then you're in the middle of writing a text in response.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that very much, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
And Susan, I wanted to thank you as well, everything you've done for myself and for Matutian. We've been the beneficiary of every, of your hard work and your expertise, and you're going to be hard to replace. And I'll miss you personally, of course. I get to spend some time early in the morning sometimes speaking to you, and I'll miss that, and I wish you the best as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, Susan, I just don't know where I'm going to go for my chocolate, but.
I'll leave a bowl.
Oh.
I'll leave a bowl on your desk.
Well, thank you anyway. So we're going to add that to our correspondence list if we can. And with that, I think everybody's spoken now, and we're going to move on to some.
That was all I had for the agenda session, so I moved to close the agenda session.
Got it. Has there been a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we've had, you know, we started the meeting with two kind of depressing matters, obviously, and we're now moving on with something that's more exciting and happy during times that have been kind of difficult for many people. I get to do a proclamation tonight for basically a hometown hero, Alan Johnson. We know, and I know a lot of people who are active on social media or who just watch Jeopardy are aware that Alan Johnson was on Jeopardy, and without anybody knowing, in December, literally under the cover of pandemic darkness, flew out to Los Angeles to participate in Jeopardy, and he did it really well when he was out there, ended up becoming Matutian's first ever Jeopardy champion. Now, it's easy for any of us to say that, you know, like, this is probably the first person ever from Matutian who's been on Jeopardy. Turns out, it's not the first person, but we can say that Alan is the first one in a while, number one, and number two, he's the first one to ever be crowned champion. And I know that, like, you know, it's something that, you know, we sort of talk about and it's become a thing in the borough, but it's really, it's really awesome, you know, for a small town like ours to have somebody who did this. I know that this has been, I've spoken to Alan about this, and I've spoken to Alan's wife, Jen, who, Jen Zimmerman, you know, about this a little bit, but this has been like a lifelong thing for Alan. He's been hugely into the show, as I guess many Jeopardy fans are. I'm not one of those people. I watch it from time to time, but he's been into this, and I guess during the pandemic, there, you know, it was no different than other times where you have an opportunity to compete. I presume that Alan has done this at different moments before this time, but then made it and then made it really far, and then had the opportunity to travel, and then, you know, kick some butt when he was there on behalf of Matutian. And Alan, you know, I mean this when I say that you really made us proud up there, and the response of people when they saw you in the zone, I mean, answering questions like, wait, Alan knows the answer to that, right? Like repeatedly on different, you know, different questions, gave me an enormous sense of pride to be the mayor of this town, having a guy like you representing us. So thank you for doing that. I know it's fun for you because you're clearly a big fan, but thank you from us for representing us and making us proud the way you did. And I'm going to read this, you know, this proclamation that, I'm not usually, if this were a, you know, a meeting, we, sorry, got the camera in the wrong direction here, you know, usually if this were a meeting where, you know, we were in person, you'd be in the chamber, and you could bring your family, we'd take a picture. We're still a couple, at least a couple of months away from being able to do that, but for now, I just want to, I'll come, I'll come to your house if you want, when everybody's awake. I know you've got two kids and they've got, you know, twins on the way, so it's a busy time in Alan's life, but I'll come and personally deliver this to your house with your family if you want to take a picture, at least with the proclamation, you know, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let me just read this, and then we'll let Alan address the council. Whereas Alan Johnson and his family have reside in Matutian, the Briny Borough, since 2017, and whereas Alan has been a lifelong Jeopardy fan and has diligently participated in the Jeopardy contestant screening for nearly a decade, and whereas Alan was one of 250,000 people who completed the online test for Jeopardy, and whereas Alan was one of only 400 people chosen to be a contestant on the show this year, which is equivalent to 0.2% acceptance rate, and whereas Alan is the first contestant to represent Matutian on Jeopardy in 35 years, and whereas Alan is the first ever Jeopardy champion from Matutian, and whereas Alan competed on Jeopardy in the midst of a global pandemic, and whereas Alan adhered to public safety precautions, of course, COVID-19 testing requirements and solo airplane travel in order to film his episode in Burbank, California, and returned from California amid a record-breaking nor'easter on December 17, 2020, and whereas Alan quarantined alone in Matutian following his travel in order to ensure the safety of his wife and daughters, and whereas Alan competed on the 37th season of Jeopardy in episode 104, which aired on Thursday, February 18, 2021, winning that episode and returned the following evening competing to compete again and coming in second place. Now therefore, be it resolved that Thursday, February 18, 2021, was hereby known as Johnson on Jeopardy Day in the borough of Matutian, the County of Middlesex, in the state of New Jersey, and be it further resolved that Borough Hall in Matutian changed its lights to blue, the color associated with Jeopardy on that evening in honor of Johnson and Jeopardy Day dated March 8, 2021. So I just want to thank you for this, and is there anything you'd like to say to the council, the borough, anything?
Yeah, thanks so much for, like, all of this and all the kind words. I mean, I, you know, when I was, you know, all my time, like, you know, trying to get on the show, I always figured that, you know, the high point of the experience would be, you know, if I were to ever make it, to be on the stage and be able to compete and hopefully win a match, but I have to say, it was greatly topped by the experience of just, you know, share, and so many people kind of sharing in that joy with me when the episode actually aired a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, this sort of brings it to a new, to a new level, too. I feel so fortunate to live in a town where, you know, where, you know, something that feels like, you know, where it feels like the whole community's been able to share in the joy. I'm really happy to have been able to bring some, you know, some joy to the town and, you know, kind of the time that we're all just trying to, like, make it through. So, I mean, it's just been an incredible experience.
Thank you, and tell Jen that that's the most awesome display of balloonage behind your head.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
That's really great. I keep it on all my work meetings.
So, well, anyway, thanks, thanks for being here, Alan, and then I'll coordinate with you, and let's, I'd love to deliver it, and we can, you know, we can talk about a time if you want to get a picture or whatever to pull it all together, all right?
Yeah, thanks so much, Mayor Bush.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Good to see you. Feel free to stay here or watch on Facebook or not watch at all. Okay, so with that, that was an uplifting story, and we have another uplifting story and something quite amazing that occurred, and I'm going to, I'm going to turn this over actually to Tyler, is that okay, to introduce Chief Arizari, because Tyler witnessed something as a resident, which was quite remarkable, I guess, two weeks ago, and I think Tyler's going to want to introduce what happened for our community.
Yeah, so this is an uplifting story. There's some unfortunate aspects of it, but it really does tell the story of how amazing our police department is, and I'm glad that the chief was able to make it here tonight. Couple of weeks ago, actually, two weeks ago today, right before this council meeting, unfortunately, a Matutian resident in our neighborhood had suffered a medical, significant medical trauma, can't go into any detail or adaptify the person, obviously, and required emergency response, and the Matutian police were there in spades. I don't, I can't recall exactly how many police vehicles I saw, chief, but it seems like four, four or five, and they beat the hospital paramedics by five, 10 minutes, maybe longer. And I happened to be outside next door at a neighbor's house, sort of, you know, just witnessing what was going on, and I personally saw two officers running to their vehicle over ice in the street and on the sidewalk in spots to grab defibrillators and ran back almost at full speed into the house. And we later learned that they saved this resident's life. Without them applying that treatment, this resident's life would likely have been lost. And so then the EMTs arrived on scene, and the resident was taken away for more treatment. And in talking with the chief after this event, you know, we all know the work that the department does to keep us safe and to protect our lives, but I certainly didn't know what the department, what the officers do to save residents' lives. I did not know how frequently, unfortunately, officers are called to provide this type of treatment to our residents, but it was an amazing act of heroism that I witnessed with my own eyes. And so I wanted to have the chief here tonight to sort of speak to the public about these types of events and how common, unfortunately, they are, and how where the officers are able to respond in Matutian quicker than maybe some other communities because of our geographics. And to thank, honor, and congratulate the chief and his department for the dedication that they showed that night and every other night. So I thank you, chief, on behalf of myself and the council, if anybody else wants to speak, and if you could just speak briefly to these types of incidents, that would be fantastic.
Well, thanks, councilman. I'll be as brief as I can, I promise, Jay Muldoon, I'd keep it under 45 minutes, which I will. So, yeah, unfortunately, or I guess fortunately, this does happen quite often. After we spoke the day or two after the incident, I looked back, and I went back five years, and over the last five years, we've saved in excess of 40, four zero, lives, and I couldn't believe it when I saw that, but I attribute that, obviously, to training. You talked a little bit about it with response time. I mean, that's what it all comes down to. How long does it take you to get there, and how long does it take you to start compressions and get the defibrillator set up for shocking if necessary? And I also attribute it to the equipment that our officers carry, which a lot of people don't realize what we carry in our patrol vehicles. And, you know, when I came on the department back in 1992, I'm pretty sure the mayor was probably still in high school then, we carried an oxygen tank.
Freshman, actually, chief.
What's that?
A freshman, actually, chief.
There you go. We carried an oxygen tank and a first aid kit that had a couple Band-Aids in it, and now these guys are carrying AEDs in their cars, they're carrying Narcan in their cars, they're carrying blood control kits in their cars. You know, again, unfortunately or fortunately, the job of a police officer has changed from somebody that goes out and drives around and tries to deter crime and maybe a ticket book here and there, to we're psychologists, we're medics, we're firemen, we're everything, we're soldiers, we're rolled, everything rolled into one. And, you know, again, we're fortunate that we're trained, we're fortunate that we have the equipment that the borough provides us, and this is just one of many success stories that I'm glad that you were able to witness, and I am glad to report, like Councilman Candell said, we can't give particulars, but the individual who you speak of, the doctors refer to him as a walking miracle right now. So kudos to my guys. I mean, I can't, I can't say enough about my guys, and I thank you all for inviting me on tonight and just giving them a little plug for not just what they do every now and then, but it's more now than then, unfortunately. And by the way, that same squad that saved this gentleman's life, I guess you said it was two days, two weeks ago today, they were, the same exact squad, they were chasing around a couple of days later, along with Edison and the state police, looking for an individual that used a gun in a robbery at a local hotel and was on the loose, and they were involved in that. So you never know what you're, you know, you're going to turn next, what page is going to be turned next, so. Thank you all, and Susan, we are going to miss you. So I'll speak more to you about this tomorrow.
I'll be waiting.
Thanks.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief, and I think that, you know, we all, you know, us laypeople, non-in-law enforcement, always, you know, tend to view police department as crime fighting, and of course, that's a very important piece of what the men and women in our department do, but there is a huge community aspect to the work they do that goes well beyond, you know, technical law enforcement, and the training that they have is, you know, obviously on display at all times. So it's really important that we recognize this work, you know? The police take a lot of, nationally, take a lot of flak, and, you know, that's something that goes without saying with some of what we've experienced over the last year, but our department and the work that they're doing right now is something that we can all be proud of here in Matutian. So thank you very much, chief, and please convey our thanks to the men and women in the department for this work, an ongoing work, which, like you said, is being highlighted tonight, but it happens all the time.
Yeah, and I thank you for that, and, yeah, I, again, I just want to say one more time, I can't be more proud of the men and women in my department, they're just, and that includes dispatchers who answer the calls and send us to the calls. I just, I can't be more proud, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay, council president?
I don't think that I can move the approval of the.
Because you served as acting mayor, is that why?
I was absent on February 8.
Because you were absent on February 8.
Yeah.
You weren't there. Okay, so why don't we ask for someone else to make a motion on that? Councilwoman Rasmussen, you want to do that?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of February 8.
Okay, we're going to motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any abstentions?
I have.
All right, thank you.
Can I, who second that?
Tyler.
I'll say.
Your voices are all the same.
Okay, as to the February 22, that one.
I can move. I move to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes of February 22, 2021.
Great, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I wasn't here at that meeting, is there anyone that needs to abstain on that one?
No.
We're all here, right? Okay, I'm going to share.
Yeah.
You guys see that, okay?
Yes.
We're on the public comment. I know that one of the public comments was from a Mr. Pagel. Is anybody here, I don't know if Mr. Pagel wants to speak publicly, is he still here? He may want to speak publicly about this as opposed to having you read his statement, but I'll see if anyone else wants to raise their hand, they can do so, and we'll call on them in order. Anybody want to speak? Mr. Pagel, is that your hand raised?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to lower your hand and ask you to unmute. Todd Pagel, you have the floor.
Hey, good evening, mayor, council. First off, I can't believe Susan, oh my God, end of an era, I can't believe it. Susan, your sense of humor got me through four years in the council, it was unbelievable. You will be very sorely, sorely missed, and in your honor, I will keep this as short as possible because I know how much you enjoy my pontificating. So I'm calling tonight just to talk about the snow removal ordinance you guys are going to be addressing. I think it's a great first step in really increasing visibility on our sidewalks and making them clear, and I'm not going to belabor the point because I emailed everyone today, and I'm not going to have Susan read the letter, but my biggest concern, and also something for, you know, I just hope that the council and mayor can discuss, is just the idea of accessibility in general when it comes to our sidewalks, right? If we're unlucky or lucky, however you look at it, we may only get, I don't know, five, six, 10 days of snow a year in Matutian, and, you know, this snow removal ordinance is going to hopefully make those sidewalks clear, but those sidewalks are obstructed other times of the year as well. Water, you know, obviously with some of our drainage issues, that's creating an issue. Vehicles, you know, I sent the council a picture of a truck blocking a sidewalk this afternoon, so I just hope that this snow ordinance can snowball, get it, into a larger discussion on accessibility in our sidewalks, because this is great, and I love the fact that the police are going to be able to enforce our snow ordinance, and I hope we can parlay that into having them enforcing other obstructions on our sidewalks as well. So thanks for taking the time to do this, and I know a lot of effort went into the ordinance, and I appreciate listening to the discussion tonight and hopefully continuing this discussion in the future. That's all I have, mayor, thank you. Congratulations, Susan, we're going to miss you.
Thanks, Todd, nice to hear from you. Any other members of the public wishing to address the council? Got a couple friendly faces on here, anyone? No, just raise your hand, you can hit the hand icon, and obviously you can see if you're not already on the Zoom meeting, you can join Zoom by following the directions on the page, excuse me, in front of you right now if you're watching this on M E T V. We'll wait a couple of seconds, but just to make sure that there's nothing to say. And if you have any comments, feel free to email thepublicmtg@matutian.com, and I'm really hoping that if we could get our numbers down, at some point, we'll be able to reopen Borough Hall, and our meetings in person are a lot more productive, but I do have to say that in as much we've seen improvement in the state overall, our coronavirus numbers in Matutian are not particularly good. I mean, I'm saying this as, you know, I was going to talk about this later, but while we're waiting for people to possibly call in, this week alone, we have had 26 cases in the borough. And, you know, that's a lot of cases for a small town. You know, our numbers are pretty substantial. You know, we're getting, we're getting close to just about one out of every 15 people in the borough have been sick with this thing since it started within a year. So that's a lot of people, and I understand that some people have had it certainly much worse than others, but, you know, 11 people dying from this is really substantial, if you think about that, it's really sad, and. And, um, you know, we've got to do what we say we're doing here with, uh, with social distancing and masks. And that stuff's going to be just as important until we get to that, you know, point of, uh, of herd immunity. And we're not, you know, even close to there yet. But again, as you're eligible for your shot, make sure you get it. Get your vaccine and the more people that get it, the better a summer and fall that we're all going to have. It's really, really important to be able to do that. Okay, so I don't think we've gotten anybody else, I don't see any other hands raised. Ms. Jackson, have you gotten any emails?
You know what? I don't see the emails, but Sherry just reminded me, um, Audra did send an email and I, sorry, Sherry, I just remembered I did have it. She sent it on Monday, February 22nd. Oh, sorry, Alexa just went on, Alexa off. Sorry, I was like, who's talking to me? So I'm going to read her email from that day. She said, I am writing this email to the borough in support of the ordinance regarding snow removal on sidewalks and ramps. There are many truths that we are in the disability community have come to know as life. Many people with disabilities do not have the ability to drive and therefore sidewalks become a way of getting from point A to B. Many people who, with disabilities cannot leave their homes in the winter because they fear further safety. We do not have the option to, of going around, going over or going through piles and mountains of snow or ice. Passing and enforcing this ordinance means that people can get out of their homes safely. In addition to ensuring safety and stability, if this ordinance is passed, it can help people continue to access and enjoy the fruits of downtown Metatchen such as our restaurants, art centers, shops and places of worship. A fall or a slip on the, on the snow and ice is not just inconvenient for someone with a mobility issue. It can trigger a relapse into someone's condition that is not fixable for a long period of time. Further, many medical devices are not usable if there are too much snow. Wheelchairs lose traction, walkers slip. Additionally, safe sidewalks can assist family members with the peace of mind. For this reason and many more that I have not shared, this is an important ordinance for our community. Passing it and enforcing it is a strong signal that Metatchen is a town that is inclusive, livable and safe for everyone, regardless of their ability. I realize that it will be a challenge to enforce this ordinance. From my own observation, starting small would be important. Perhaps making essential areas a priority first will help. I would be happy to share my thoughts on specifics in, in this respect. I have always experienced Metatchen to be a place that wants to do the right thing. I feel my heart that we have a council that shares that spirit. Thank you very much for considering this letter. Thank you for all your hard work, your time and energy. Opera, uh, Audra, sorry.
All right, and Audra is here, hi Audra. We will consider what you're saying, obviously, and obviously the council is going to make a decision on this ordinance, at least the, uh, the reading today. With that, I also see someone who's joined us since then, Isaac Kramer.
Good evening, your honor. I, I wanted to speak, uh, to the ordinance, uh, with respect to the snow removal. And obviously say on behalf of the Downtown Alliance and our members that, um, it's, it's a very important, uh, service that we provide for people to use the downtown. And, uh, we are very hopeful and looking forward, uh, to that ordinance and the passage of it tonight. But in addition to that, um, I do want to make sure to say a special thank you, uh, to the borough, to DPW, uh, and to all the people who helped to respond to really some really difficult circumstances, uh, during the month of February. But I have to say of my five years, almost five years in Metatchen, one of the times I was most proud, uh, was both during that response and a few days later to see our streets, our sidewalks completely cleared of snow. It was a miracle really, and not many towns in Jersey were able to pull that off as well as we were. So a big thank you for that. And one other quick item, uh, since it's on the agenda, I'll just mention, uh, the introduction of our budget, uh, for this fiscal year. Uh, we are speaking in support of that and also looking forward to the hearing, which I believe will be on April 12th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kramer, nice to hear from you. Anyone else wishing to address the Borough Council and Mayor? Okay, seeing none. We will now move into ordinance introduction.
Okay, this is 21-05, and I move that it be taken, introduced and taken up on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ms. Jackson, would you please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance amending section 166-3 of the Code of the Borough of Metatchen entitled Snow Removal and adding section 166-3.1 entitled Dumping or Placing Snow on Streets, Roadways or Public Right Of Ways Prohibited.
Do we want to have a small explanation of that or is everybody clear?
Pearlstein, you want to describe the, uh, short version of that?
Sure, um, so the reason for the genesis of this had to do with the fact that when we had the epic snowstorm that we had a couple of weeks ago, or maybe even a month ago now, um, we, DPW was running into significant issues with contractors removing snow from private property and pushing it into our right of way or creating obstructions, um, resulting in, um, causing our, our snow removal to get more complicated. So, um, I collaborated with our chief and our, uh, borough attorney Dennis to talk about what we could do to tighten this up, to make sure that people knew that, um, they cannot be dumping additional snow into the roadways. I think it was exacerbated again by the fact that there was so much of it. In doing so, Dennis had also mentioned that, uh, discussions had arisen, um, regarding, um, accessibility and pathways and most importantly, um, handicap spots and who was, who would, you know, who was digging those out? And so we got into a discussion and, um, Dennis was able to also address some of those things. With all that being said, um, you know, we will definitely have, um, hopefully this creates an awareness in the borough about everyone's responsibility. We will try and enforce as much as possible moving forward. You know, um, I'm under no delusions though that we're going to have every sidewalk cleared and everything, you know, in tip top perfect shape, but I think it's really important. Why we're, we were doing this specifically to address the, uh, snow that was being placed in our right of ways was to also, um, create an awareness in the borough about the need for accessibility and for people to clear their sidewalks, especially with, um, major snowstorms like this. So that's it.
And we've said many, good points, uh, Ms. Pearlstein. We've said many times that in governing this borough and anytime anyone's in a position of, you know, policymaking in government, that you're often guided by the experiences that you have. And sometimes, um, events make you realize or help you realize that a change is necessary or tweak is necessary. Um, and so I'm really proud of this administration and this council for coming to the realization that this was necessary, even if it took a storm like this to help us understand that. You know, this is, you can't be pressing it. I mean, sometimes residents expect us to be, but the reality is that we're like anybody else. You can't always expect every situation to arise. Um, and sometimes situation, situations arise where, um, it's, you know, particular mechanisms for resolving those issues, um, strike you sort of at that moment where you say to yourself, I wish we could do this, or I wish we could do that. Maybe if we had this in place, it might help us do that, you know? And, um, and, and these, and these storms are really, really complicated in small towns like ours because even though our DPW works really hard, um, you know, we're dealing with, we're dealing with, um, residents who expect us to respond immediately. We've got, you know, a, 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 a crew of people who are human beings and not robots who need to eventually go home and go to sleep. We're competing with private contractors who are doing all kinds of stuff they're not supposed to be doing. And we've got a police department who, like we said, do many more things than, uh, than just enforce the laws. They go around on wellness checks and make sure everybody's okay. We've got people who are stuck in ice and snow. It's just, there's a lot of things going on. So it's really amazing that, uh, we were able to kind of pull this together. So sometimes out of these crises, we pull, um, opportunities for, for change. And this is a really, really good product, not that different than a couple of years ago, for example, when, uh, we changed the ordinance on, on some of the, that, that we're hoping to stop some of the, um, the water, uh, from, uh, from coming, from some of the drainage issues that we've had from some of the, the, the digging that has gone on from some developers. You know, you see a problem and you try to fix it, but sometimes it takes those problems to exist to realize that it takes fixing. Councilwoman Rubin?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, um, to speak on this because, um, it became something that I, I spent some time with over the course of the last month or so, when we realized that we had a big hole in our, in our borough code as it related to curb, curb ramps, which are the, the slope at the end of every corner where a person can access the street from the sidewalk. If you can't go over a curb, you can use the curb ramp. They've been called handicap ramps, they've been called curb cuts, um, all different names for them. And we have really worked very hard, I know, over the last 10 years to ensure that we have curb ramps at all of the corners, um, in town. And we have made great progress with improving accessibility in that regard. But we uncovered the fact that our code did not address whose responsibility it was to remove the snow from the residential sidewalks where there is a curb cut. And so many people who tried to clear their sidewalk, which is the right thing to do, were, I guess, um, without realizing it, pushing the snow into the curb cut. So the sidewalk was perfectly clear, but the curb ramp was full of snow. And we didn't actually have a mechanism to address that. And so I appreciate these major snowstorms this year because it allowed us, like the mayor said, to examine a gap in our ordinance. And, um, Mr. Murphy worked very hard on that and we, you know, several of us talked about it. And it doesn't cure the issue of snow. It's still going to snow, it's still going to pile up, it's still going to be there. But we now have clear guidance and language to address the fact that a resident who has a sidewalk is not supposed to put the snow from the sidewalk into the curb cut. And so, um, I do very much appreciate this change, even though that wasn't the original intent of the ordinance. It gave us a mechanism to fix something that needed to be fixed. And so I do think it, it makes, uh, a great, uh, progress towards improved accessibility. And, um, I, I can speak on behalf of the Accessibility Committee as well as myself that I, I appreciate our efforts in that regard. And, you know, you don't know, like the mayor said, you don't know what the problem is until you stumble upon it. And we did this year, so, so thank you to everyone who made that possible.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Delia?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Sherry, um, for, for working on, on this and getting this together. One thing that I, it is brought to mind because you just mentioned all the curb cuts and the fact that those often get covered with snow and many times don't get shoveled out. I hope this obviously helps to change that and those will now be shoveled out so they can be accessible. But one thing that I, I do happen to see quite a bit, and this is 100% easier said than done, right? I'm here sitting in my office, I don't know how to, how to push snow with a, with a plow in a truck. But oftentimes, um, as our DPW is, is finding the streets, they'll pile up the snow at those corners. So perhaps that's something, Melissa, maybe I'll follow up with you, um, about after this meeting and we can, we can talk to Fred. I don't know if, how difficult it would be to even just push that snow just, you know, five feet further into basically where, you know, the 25 feet from the corner where there's no parking anyway. If the snow could potentially be piled up there, again, I'm sure that's a lot easier said than done. But maybe it's something we could look into, um, because then that will make that, the shoveling of those curbs a lot easier for people that live on corners.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yeah, I, I actually agree with, uh, Jason. I, I was going to say something, but he said it first. And it just seems like normal when they go with a plow, they stop at the corner, but, you know, by the time they get done, the corners have packed, packed snow like a glacier. And I don't know how any ordinary person could just go there and dig it out with a shovel. I mean, it would be ridiculous to try to ask a homeowner who maybe can't afford, you know, a contractor that would have equipment to clear out, you know, the curb cut. So I definitely agree with him that maybe, um, before we have snow again, like before next year, God willing, we don't get any more snow this year, um, to figure out like a better way to do it. You know, a better mousetrap for, for the, you know, little white mouse that falls on our borough. So maybe we can work on something, better plan.
Thank you, Councilwoman, anybody else?
I just, um, I, maybe I'm not remembering this correctly, but Sherry, I thought we did have a little bit of a discussion about that. For the people who do live on the corners and I, I'm, I don't remember how we resolved it, but it was definitely something that we had, uh, that was in our consciousness and we, um, we understand that, that that happens at corners and a lot to ask the, uh, the homeowner to then shovel a 10 foot, 10 foot.
Yeah, we did talk about that because it's an inevitable problem. So when you have a normal snowfall like we normally do with a little bit of snow, it's reasonable for a homeowner to clean their sidewalk and not put the snow in the curb cut. When we have snow like we did this year and the plowing ends up putting everything at the corner, you're, you're, it's, uh, it's an issue. It's, we cannot avoid the fact that that happens, that's true. So we did talk about enabling DPW to go back through the town and try to improve that situation after they've plowed the streets initially. We have talked, uh, we talked to, uh, chief, um, about maybe some, getting some help for residents who are unable to shovel that amount of snow from the police department. You know, it's not, we can't make the snow melt, right? But we can talk to DPW, um, in advance of next winter, recognizing this as a problem. Maybe they can alter their route or maybe they can, you know, do some of the one side than the other side. I, I'm no DPW expert, but we do recognize that that's a problem. And, and we're not asking residents necessarily to shovel 10 feet of snow from the curb cuts, but we are recognizing that the curb cuts do have to be clear and that we have to pay more, more attention to that. So that's a yes and no kind of answer to your question, but it, it, it's a re, a realistic problem.
Right, I, I just want to jump in here because I don't want anyone to think that DPW is going to be able to clear every curb cut that we have in the borough, okay? This is certainly a work in progress. I hear what everyone's saying in terms of, hopefully we won't get the type of snow that we had in this one, it was like an epic storm, um, which created some of these issues. I will talk with, with the, um, with Fred Hall about this, but I don't want anyone to have the, the false expectation that we are going to be able to do this borough wide. It, it just, maybe the major roads, like Main Street and things like that where he can go back in and help. But he already, as, um, some, Isaac had mentioned when he called in, it took us a lot of time to get rid of all the snow that was downtown. And that's a big, important thing that we have to do after the snow. So I just want to set some realistic expectations moving forward that maybe we figure out some routes because we cannot do that throughout the whole borough. Okay?
Mayor? So what you're saying, uh, Ms. Pearlstein is that DPW will clear every single curb cut? I'm kidding, of course.
I, I just wanted to express my concern, um, about how this may affect the elderly residents of, of our town. We have several people who just, who are, they're just not capable of, of moving 42 inches of snow if you have 12 inches or 15 inches of snow. And, and I'm kind of concerned about that, about how, how, how this impacts them. You know, I, I'm able to move all the stone in front of my house easily. You know, I grew up outside of Buffalo, I'm, I'm used to that. There's, there are elderly neighbors who just can't do that. And, you know, thankfully we live in a town of good neighbors where neighbors will, will plow each other's and, and use their snow blowers and, and clear out spaces. But for those people who can't do that, I'm worried about, about how this affects them.
And, um. That's what we talked about when, when we were, uh, talking about developing this ordinance and, um, and, uh, you know, I, I brought it up because I have a neighbor who lives on a corner with the curb cut and she's quite elderly and I don't think that she would be able to do it. And, um, the one thing that she did say was that, um, they are familiar with residents in town and they know who lives where. So like, he knew my neighbor, you know, that I, that I did not name by name and, um, I mean, we recognize that 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 is an issue. So that's why the whole discussion around. Maybe finding help for that person to be able to, you know, to have somebody help them shovel. But I do like the idea that Jason brought up of. Maybe working with DPW to see if they could just push that snow. Five feet further into that space from the corner. Where they can't, where people can't park anyway. So, I mean, these are discussions that we will have to have ongoing. But believe me, it did come up as a as an issue as we discussed the ordinance.
Of course.
Can I just, I'm sorry.
Um, just to to reiterate what Linda was saying, it did come up. It was a discussion and the. The chief assured me because he's going to be one, there'll be the enforcement end of this, that they always go and knock on the door first and evaluate the situation. And it, you know, it's not this arbitrary or. Thing where they'll just put a violation or something like that. They'll they'll talk to the people. They'll have a dialogue. Nothing happens. No violation would be issued normally until, you know, if they didn't listen or there wasn't something that could be even easily navigated. Okay?
We also have to add that this is not a new ordinance. We already had this ordinance. We just are improving it. So we're not creating a new requirement on residents that didn't exist before. We're not creating a new penalty. We're not creating a system of reporting on your neighbors. We're not creating a violation, you know, complaint. Box. None of that is happening. This is the same ordinance that we've always had. There has been an obligation on our residents, whether they're elderly or not. We haven't changed anything with regard to that. It's the same exact. Requirement, just cleaned up a little bit with some specification. So nobody is going to, who was previously elderly. Is not going to be burdened any greater than they ever were before. So and we have always tried to, you know, find ways to help those residents in in the past. So. I don't want the public to to think that we just created a new requirement. We absolutely did not. We just cleaned up the one that we already have. I think that's an important point.
I just have a question. As far as the 42 inches, which Dan alluded to. Ms. Pearlstein, is is that a is that a a width of art? Is there something that that is? There's important about 42 inches because I think I've seen some other ordinances where they reference 30 inches. And I was just wondering if there was something particular to the 42 inch width.
Dennis, do you want to jump in? Because you would, I think it's.
I mean, the the 42 inches came, I mean, from. And and if I may, just going. Councilwoman Rubin's comments. I mean. The the or the requirement to shovel your snow. Whether this ordinance of on your sidewalk, whether this ordinance passes or not or moves forward. Exists. That that exists. I mean, as we sit here, I mean, today, that that's a requirement of all homeowners. What this ordinance essentially did was just cleaned up the language in order to make sure that it was clear. That the curb ramps were included in the, I mean, what was required to be shoveled. The getting to your comment. Councilman, the 42 inches was used in other municipal ordinances, and that's where I came up with the 42 inches. I mean, that's not a legal requirement. It comes from state statute. It's just that was generally in other municipalities ordinances.
And then one more question. How is the enforcement language changed from the existing ordinance?
The 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 enforcement language was changed with it. It specifically added the police department. As well as the zoning officer. But that was just a specific reference. I mean, the police department can can enforce, I mean, pretty much any ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All right. Any other questions? Our scene none. Council President?
I move that ordinance 2021-05 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing set down for Monday, March 22, 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Ms. Jackson?
Councilman Delia?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Candell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Yes.
Council President Kuskowski?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. I move that ordinance 2021-06 be introduced and taken up on first reading.
Thanks. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Ms. Jackson? I think this is the last time I'll be asking you to do this. Will you please read the ordinance by title only?
Bond Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Bond Ordinance Number 2020-04. Herefore finally adopted by the Borough Council of the Borough of Matutchen on February 3, 2020, to increase the appropriation to $5,260,000. And to increase the authorization of bonds and notes to $5,260,000 therein.
I move that, let's see. Oh, do we want to talk about this first or just?
Bond ordinance. Maybe quickly, Ms. Pearlstein, if you want to just mention what this is.
Um, I would defer to Mr. Muldoon.
Yeah, so this this bond ordinance is providing for the construction of a new a new pump station. I think everyone's familiar. We've worked, we've been working. For several years. For a new pump station to replace the pump station on Jersey Avenue, and it will be a joint pump station with Edison Township. They have a. Smaller pump station, a couple hundred yards from ours, and both are in need of replacement. So we have a shared service agreement with Edison to construct a new joint pump station. So in October. February 3 of last year, the council passed an ordinance, a bond ordinance. The amount of $4,100,000. And we are now at the stage of final design. And we're about to submit plans to DEP and the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank for financing. And we received the final design and cost estimate from. Our engineers and the price has increased for the whole project. By $1,160,000. So we have to update. Amend the bond ordinance to reflect that increase to $5,260,000 and the. You know, the increase is is related. You know, for for several things, primarily when the feasibility study was done over two years ago. On any kind of project like this, you have some initial assumptions regarding. The size of the of the pump station, the location where it's going to be. And so that initial estimate was based on the the feasibility study, and as you move through your process. And things become real and you find out. You know, what is actually needed, and there might be additional chambers and surge releases and valves and. You know, additional things that weren't anticipated in the beginning. In meeting with the Middlesex County Utilities Authority, they incorporated some changes. Regarding separation of the flow from Edison and Matutchen, this is probably more information than you'd really want. And also, over time, of course, construction costs have increased like 5.4%. So we have a full accounting of what the increases. And costs are, but in order to move forward, we have to kind of in effect, in effect, re-up. Adjust the bond ordinance to reflect that increase. That's what's before you tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, this is not exactly the sexy work we do, but this is what we do in local government. Building a pump station is essential. Especially for some people on that side of town who've had some issues as a result of the failing pump station that we own and the completely. Broken pump station that Edison has. And by the way, if we were doing this on our own, we'd be bonding this and paying the whole thing ourselves. Because we're sharing this with Edison, Edison is paying for half of this. And so this is a great. Great example of local governments working together. And we appreciate that Edison's being a partner on this and we're going to continue to move forward. Jay, can I just ask, and I'm not holding you to it. But what's your estimation once DEP approves? I mean, how long are we away from getting this thing under under construction?
Yeah, I think I sent that in an email to you, but the today, the we're planning, I mean, we we need to get the approvals from DEP. The authorization to go out to bid. We're expecting. That approval. Hopefully in two months and based on that, we want to. Have bids due sometime in June and then we would award. Probably within a month after that, you know, this all requires council action. And so we could start construction. You know, in the fall. And it's going to be about, you know, 12 to 15 month. Construction process. So we're, you know, basically. A year and a half. If things go well, we'll be up and running with the new new station.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for. Sitting through this meeting with us. We appreciate it and. The council on this? Okay, Council President?
I move that ordinance 2021-06 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing set down for Monday, March 22, 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Ms. Jackson?
Councilman Delia?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Candell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rubin?
Yes.
Council President Kuskowski?
Yes. Um, okay, at this time, I move to approve Communications Consent Agenda Items A through E. Should it be through F? Is this where we put your letter?
Put it there.
Let's 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 add Ms. Jackson's resignation as letter F there. Okay, so that's your motion, Ms. Kuskowski? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Reports of council members. Council President Kuskowski?
The Library Board will be meeting tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. It will be a Zoom meeting if anybody would like to join us. And the Parking Authority meets the following Tuesday. So I will have a fuller report at our next meeting. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Rubin?
I have no report to me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rasmussen?
Okay, the Shade Tree Commission met last week and one of the highlights is. Three of our members are going to be having the core training virtually. Normally, we have. Some big fanfare and and go to like a weekend of learning about trees, but because of COVID, we'll be learning, I guess, from our living rooms. So that's kind of exciting, getting some of the new Shade Tree People Core trained. And the the Environmental Commission is going to be meeting this week, not this week, next week. So hopefully people are welcome to join us on Zoom for that meeting and that's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Candell?
Yes, the Recreation Commission is going to be meeting, I believe, next week. So I have a full report on that. The Historic Preservation Committee met. Last week and we talked about coordinating with the Borough's Director of Multimedia Communications, Brandon. To set up a Facebook page devoted to developing and and. The the community's appreciation for the Borough's historic preservation assets. The goal is to disseminate information about historic preservation efforts in Matutchen and why they matter in terms of preserving Matutchen's character. And culture. When the page is set up, we hope that all interested borough residents will like and follow it in order to. Read the committee's posts. And the committee is meeting on the 25th, if any members of the public would like to attend.
Okay, Councilman Candell is getting some rave reviews. From the Chairwoman of the Historic Preservation Committee. And his early experience with them in one of his first roles as councilman. So. Thank you for being attentive to them. I should have been telling you this, but this is a little, I guess, a little part of your your initiation to our. To our group here, but really.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it and they're they're an active group and they they expect some attention. So thanks for giving it to them. Okay, Councilman Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. The Matutchen Municipal Pool Commission will be meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, March 9 via Zoom at 8 p.m. That's 8 p.m. We are committed to ensuring that we will have a pool season this year and we're working on plans to ensure that the use of the pool and the area around it will be safe for patrons and employees. In addition, the Matutchen Municipal Alliance Meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, the 11th. I believe that's at 7:30 and the public is welcome to that as well. And that's also by Zoom.
And and Dan, Dan, I know that resident Garrett Mulfetto is particularly concerned about whether or not there's going to be a pool season. This year, obviously, we can't commit to anything at this very moment, but how's it looking? I mean, you're saying you're hopeful.
No, we're committed to it. I I would say, but if I if I were a betting man, I would say, yes, there's going to be a pool year this year.
Okay, because Garrett, I think he's probably.
I miss it. I know. I don't know anybody else. I miss the pool.
All right, so I'll respond to Garrett and if Garrett, if you're watching, we are doing our very best to get you a pool season this year. I know how important it is to you and so many other residents. So. Thanks for that, Dan. We're gonna.
Everybody get their shots, get their vaccines.
Yes, yeah, that that would be helpful. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Delia?
Thank you, Mayor. The TV and Technology Committee had their February meeting a week or so ago. They continued discussions about some of the issues that the town is having with our cable and internet service and. Still working on ways to sort of help people and maybe come up with a sort of a community campaign potentially. So keeping that you're out for that. As we go forward, the T Traffic and Transportation Committee is meeting tomorrow. I'm sorry, on Wednesday. And that's their third meeting of the month, so I'm going to have a more of a report for you at our next meeting. But one thing I did want to bring up in the previous agenda item, we just approved the resignation of Jay Galliotta from the Traffic and Transportation Committee. And I just wanted to say a couple of words about Jay, if you if I may. He's been with the committee for well over a decade and most of that time as the Chair of that committee. Jay has been, you know, that that leader that the committee needs to keep them on the straight and narrow. He's he's always, first of all, he always keeps us to a tight 60 minutes, which has always been great. It's one of the Jay Galliotta rules for the committee, which is amazing. But he's over this time, he's presided over so many changes. You know, a lot of these changes that we've done even recently. Don't necessarily get done without the Traffic Transportation Committee's commitment and Jay's leadership there. So. Things like the Sabres to School. Report, the Bike Pedestrian Plan from 2016, the Senior Walkability Study, the Street Smart Education Campaign. Reduction of Grove Avenue to 25 miles an hour and then even more recently, the county and state runs like. You know, Jay and the committee have all been involved in all of these things. So it's definitely. The the one little piece of solace I take with it is that Jay is going to be on the planning board now and he's taking the. 10 plus years of experience with these issues to the planning board and is going to have that sort of lens that he's going to be looking at all the all of his. All the plans that come through there. So I'm happy about that and. But definitely sad to lose Jay as a as a member of that committee. So thank you.
Thanks. How about how about a new how about a new chairperson? What are we looking at here?
Well, we'll be reorganizing on Wednesday, so I'll have that the big, I'll keep you all in suspense and I'll have the big reveal at the next meeting. How about that?
Could be a big name. That's all I got to say. Could be. Anyway, thank you very much, Councilman. We appreciate that. Reports from Ms. Pearlstein. You have anything for us?
No.
Thank you. All right, and I I have. I have nothing. I'll I'll let I'll let this meeting go go over. I have nothing. I'll I'll, I'll let, I'll let this meeting go go over, be over sooner than it would have otherwise been. I'll I'll pass on that. Uh, and further updates, you can check out any of my social media pages. All right, new business consent agenda?
Yep, I'd like, I'd like to move to approve the new business consent agenda resolutions twenty twenty one dash eighty five through eighty nine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, actually.
I'm sorry.
Supposed to be through ninety?
You meant to say ninety? Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, so we have.
And the second was meant to be through ninety.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. Okay, so we've got that and uh. All uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I just, um, I have a question though, um, because I have a note here that says we need to set a public hearing for one of the resolutions.
Oh, um, the M D A has to have a public um, meeting.
A public hearing.
A public hearing, sorry.
Budget.
Yeah, it will be on April twelfth, like, meeting, because we have, we need twenty eight days in between.
Right.
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll, we'll advertise or Susan or whoever from the borough will advertise a notice of the hearing on that budget.
For April twelfth, this is, this is twenty twenty one eighty five dash eighty five, correct?
Right.
We'll have a public hearing on April twelfth, but you're going to advertise it in accordance to the Open Public Meeting Act.
Right, I'll advertise it tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
Okay, uh, so at this time, I move to approve um, resolution twenty twenty one dash ninety one, which is the. Resolution authorizing the payment of the bill list in the amount of six hundred and seventy one thousand, two hundred and seventy nine dollars and twenty five cents.
Thanks. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, opposed?
All right, I'm going to make a recommendation to appoint Ronald Grazele from alternate one to regular member. With an unexpired term to uh, December thirty first, two thousand twenty three, to the Traffic and Transportation Committee.
Okay, so I guess I move to uh, accept the recommendation.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Our second by by Councilman Candell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, so with that.
I move, uh, I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is her second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, before we adjourn, thank you, Susan, for everything. It's been great working with you.
My honor and privilege to work with each and every one of you through the years.
Okay, and don't be a stranger, all right?
All right.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson, one last time. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.